One, the lack of affordable legal services. Two, the lack of English proficiency, particularly among seniors. And three, the lack of reliable information about quality immigrant services. These gaps in the marketplace provide a fertile environment for migration-related services fraught to exist. It should be noted that this type of fraud increases whenever there are changes in immigration laws and regulations because lack of information unfortunately provides the best opportunity for taking advantage of consumers. For this reason, the recent executive action by President Barack Obama on immigration, as necessary as it is, does present such an opportunity. We believe that this bill, as well as the collective efforts being undertaken to better educate consumers, can help protect innocent immigrants from being taken advantage of. Fraudulent notaries and so-called immigration services consultants take advantage of immigrants by claiming to offer affordable immigration advice in the client's native language and in a culturally competent manner. It is important to note that there are also well-meaning but uninformed notaries who want to genuinely provide affordable services to the community, but in doing so, commit mistakes or provide poor advice, thus jeopardizing their clients' prospect for naturalization and other lawful status. We know that immigration-related services fraud is a persistent yet under-reported problem within the immigrant community. Many do not realize that notaries are not attorneys and do not have the same status in the United States that they have in their country of origin. Immigrants also fear that they will be deported if they file a complaint, and even if they're willing to pursue legal action, they don't know who to turn to. We believe that working collectively with immigrant service groups and in partnership with law enforcement, licensing, and inspections, city council, and others, we can have a positive impact in this issue. Our goals in this regard include, number one, to increase availability of affordable immigration legal services; two, creating a clearinghouse for information related to immigrant services; and three, the broad dissemination of accurate information about the naturalization process, changes in immigration laws, and the legitimate immigration legal services providers. Last year, our office partnered with the Philadelphia chapter of the Immigration Lawyers Association, HIAS Pennsylvania, and many other groups for Pro Bono Citizenship Day, where attorneys provided free legal services and helped immigrants submit their naturalization applications. As mentioned earlier, this year, Philadelphia has joined Cities for Citizenship, which will provide access to technical assistance and other resources that will enable us to scale up this initiative. We also look to leverage the free library system and to increase the recruitment of pro bono attorneys. Although our website includes information on immigration-related services fraud and links to immigration service providers, we are working closely with the Friends of Farm Workers and with Councilman O'Brien's office to develop a more comprehensive set of documents and content and an outreach plan, including the translation of disclosures and any other information required by this bill. Furthermore, in anticipation of changes to federal immigration policies, our office will work internally within city government to identify opportunities to help immigrants meet requirements for the just passed immigration action. Moema is committed to collaborating with law enforcement, the District Attorney's Office, Police Department, and City Council, LNI, and other agencies to increase awareness about immigration-related services fraud. We will continue to work with our community partners to strengthen the network of pro bono attorneys and to identify resources that will help immigrants access affordable, quality legal services in a culturally competent environment so that there is no opportunity for bad actors to take advantage of vulnerable immigrants. Thank you.
Thank you. Before Ms. Swanson proceeds, I want to recognize that Councilman Heenan is also in attendance and Councilman David O., oh, I'm sorry, and Councilwoman Bass. She's so quiet over there. You can proceed, Rebecca.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Sanchez, Councilman O'Brien, and members of the Committee on Licenses and Inspections. My name is Rebecca Swanson. I am the Director of Policy and Legislative Affairs for the Department of Licenses and Inspections. I am pleased to have the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill Number 140142 introduced by Councilman O'Brien. The Department of Licenses and Inspections would first like to thank the sponsor for his commitment to ongoing discussions to address difficult questions regarding the nature of LNI enforcement and to ensure that the final bill presented today, as amended, provides the legal advances sought while recognizing the department's current operational framework. The department supports the intent of the bill and is committed to enforce those provisions that fall within our enforcement capabilities. We believe that the requirement of an immigration services provider registration that instructs the applicant of the requirements of providing such services is a meaningful component of the public protection sought. The department is prepared to administer this registration and maintain an online record of all registration holders. The bill's requirements for the posting of certain disclosures, fee schedules, and advertisements in places of business will be of value to consumers in helping them understand what immigration service providers can and cannot ethically and legally do for them and how much those services cost. LNI can design some of these documents in concert with the Mayor's Office of Immigrant and Multicultural Affairs, post them online for download by providers, and inspect places of business that may not be complying with those requirements. Where violations fall outside of the set of issues committed to LNI under subsection three of the bill, the department is prepared both to make referrals to appropriate agencies to conduct investigations and to accept findings from investigations conducted by these agencies. Where these findings show documented substantive violations, the department is prepared to take appropriate action. Thank you for the opportunity to provide the department's testimony on Bill Number 140142. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Before I call on Councilman O'Brien, I just want to publicly thank the administration for working with us through Monday on all of the necessary changes. There have been an amendment that's been circulated to all of the members, and now I will call on Councilman O'Brien to explain all of those amendments. Councilman O'Brien?
I'm not going to explain all the amendments. I think our two testifiers today have outlined the general provisions of the bill, and I would just like to echo the sentiments and offer some acknowledgements of those who have made this effort successful. First, we have Art Reed and Vanessa Stein from the Friends of Farm Workers in the back of the room who brought this issue to us. We have Carrie Malone in the Philadelphia District Attorney's Office, who has also committed to working with us and creating a paper trail so that we can find the bad actors. And Matthew Blaisdell, Caron Williams from LNI, Rebecca Swanson for your wonderful participation in fine-tuning the legal language and making sure that the enforcement is both available and that the agencies are now working together in a fundamental way to make sure that all the responsibilities are recognized and that they're working interactively to make this legislation a success. Rich Negram from the Managing Director's Office, who brought everybody together, and Jennifer Rodriguez, thank you for coming together. And I'd like to also acknowledge my staff, Maryam Enriquez and Matt Brayden, who have put a lot of time in this issue over the last year. We have an historic opportunity today to vote this bill out. It's even more important today than it was a year ago when we introduced it because of the president's pending executive order. There are bad actors that are standing in the pathway of people's pathway to citizenship. They hold themselves out as being able to provide legal services and often suggest that there are other benefits that these individuals can qualify for, but those benefits are never really available. They also engage in activities where they fill the forms out for individuals, and those false statements are not the responsibility of the person who is seeking citizenship, but rather are manufactured by the person who is illegally providing legal services. But that in and of itself disqualifies that person. There is no second bite of the apple. There is no, "I'm sorry, I made a mistake." These people are in fact deported, and they go back to countries where their lives are at risk. And we've heard testimony where people are working under the table, and then they are injured, and they lose the use of their arms or other appendages, and then they're sent back, they're deported, and they can't support their families, and they can't make a livelihood in that country. This is an injustice that is being perpetrated on the citizens or individuals living in the city of Philadelphia, and we have to recognize that we have always been a home for immigrants, and we always will be. And these are people who will, as they have in the past, I often think of Geronimo when you think of immigration services, and Geronimo just sitting there and saying, "Where did you come from?" There are always going to be people coming from different countries that are going to enrich us as a society, and our job is to make sure that they have legal services and other immigration services that are clearly defined, and not only what services they're allowed to provide, what services they're not allowed to provide, what fees they're allowed to charge, and that the records are kept. And again, I want to thank LNI, Rebecca, and Commissioner Williams, the DA's office, the Police Department, for helping us prioritize these issues, setting up opportunities for training and education. Once these component parts are in place, I think there will be a general outreach to the community so that they are aware of what services they should access. And I just want to thank the chairperson. She brought real and tangible concerns that we were able to negotiate our way through, and we now are going to work through the commercial licensing and have a registration and a comprehensive checklist. Some of the standards that we're putting in this bill don't exist in Chicago and New York, and we are now one of three cities in the entire United States that are addressing this comprehensively. So I want to thank everybody for their assistance, and I look forward to the passage of the bill.
Thank you, Councilman O'Brien. As you well stated, this is a very timely matter because of the president's executive order, and we all look forward to working with you on the education and the outreach components of this bill. Thank you both ladies. I believe if the clerk, if you can. So will the clerk read the title of Bill 140750, bill introduced by Councilman Squilla?
An ordinance amending section 9-613 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Junk Dealers to establish additional requirements in connection with engaging in the business of a junk dealer, all under certain terms and conditions.
And the only person we have testifying on this is Rebecca.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman Sanchez, Councilwoman Squilla, and members of the Committee on Licenses and Inspections. My name is Rebecca Swanson. I am the Director of Policy and Legislative Affairs for the Department of LNI. I am pleased to have the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill Number 140750 introduced by Councilman Squilla. The Department of Licenses and Inspections thanks the sponsor for working with the department on this bill. The department supports this bill as amended and the additional requirements it places upon junk dealers as defined in section nine of the Philadelphia Code to maintain certain records and to verify reasonable proof of lawful possession by the seller. The department is prepared to enforce its provisions should this bill pass and become law. Thank you for the opportunity to provide the department's testimony on Bill Number 140750. I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Any questions for this witness? Seeing none, thank you. We will move to Bill, if the clerk will read the title of Bill 130628.
An ordinance amending chapter 10-1200 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Posting of Signs by revising enforcement and penalty provisions relating to posting and advertising upon signs on utility poles, streetlights, and other structures and making technical changes, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. St. Martin, you can talk about this issue we all hate so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Canionna Sanchez and members of the Committee on Licenses and Inspections. My name is St. Martin Torrance, and I'm the Director of Legislative Affairs for the Department of Streets. I'm here to offer testimony in support of Bill Number 130628. The purpose of this bill is to strengthen existing city code language and increase penalties for the posting of signs on utility poles, streetlights, traffic control devices, historical markers, and trees located in the public right-of-way. In particular, the bill would, one, increase the fines and penalties for signs that are posted higher than seven feet above ground, signs that are constructed of more permanent materials such as plywood or corrugated plastic, and signs that are affixed using substantial attachment methods such as nails, bolts, or adhesives. Two, allow for the confiscation of any tools or equipment used to install illegal signs. Three, stipulate that signs may be removed and disposed by any public or private individual or entity without obligation or compensation to the owner of the signs. And finally, four, stipulate that the owner of the signs shall be liable for all costs for sign removal and for any injury sustained by any individual during removal of any sign. The provisions of the bill are intended to target unscrupulous business owners who knowingly and repeatedly thumb their noses at city government, neighborhoods, and legitimate businesses by installing signs by the thousands or by installing signs in a manner that makes their removal difficult and expensive. Furthermore, this bill recognizes that rigid signs and signs installed with attachments such as nail and bolts present a clear safety hazard to utility workers who must climb the poles to service electrical and communication wiring. Additional penalties are warranted for these types of installations. The Department of Streets is responsible for the overall order and cleanliness of the public right-of-way and serves as an agent of the Department of Licenses and Inspections in the removal of illegal signs posted on utility poles, trees, and traffic and control devices. In that role, the Department of Streets and the Community Life Improvement Program, or CLIP, along with a network of dedicated community activists, remove tens of thousands of illegal signs each year. Volunteers, temporary workers, limited-duty employees, and in some cases, full-time employees using expensive specialized equipment such as bucket trucks are utilized in the effort. The cost to the Department of Streets for the removal of illegal signs is in excess of $100,000 per year. Illegal signs located in the public right-of-way are commonly known as bandit signs and are a source of litter and blight in many neighborhoods. They clearly present a broken window that degrades the fabric of otherwise stable and orderly business districts and neighborhoods. Their presence decreases property values. Companies that advertise in this manner gain an unfair advantage over law-abiding businesses. The Department of Streets has found that businesses that utilize bandit-side advertising typically operate without city licenses and are paying no taxes. More disturbingly, these businesses often prey upon elderly and disadvantaged members of the community by offering various quick cash schemes and non-existent job opportunities that are nothing more than an elaborate identity theft ruse. Over the past 18 months, the Department of Streets, together with the Department of LNI, through bandit sign investigations, have identified and closed multiple illegal nightclubs and places of assembly that were operating without fire inspections, zoning approvals, and required licenses. The Department of Streets recommends that citizens not patronize any businesses that use bandit-side advertising, and that citizens should promptly remove any bandit signs that are located on utility poles and trees outside their residence or business. The most prolific of the bandit sign posters are the junk car buyers, who literally installed hundreds of thousands illegal signs throughout the city. They are unlicensed and operate in an undocumented cash-only environment. The Department of Streets strongly supports the provisions and intent of Bill Number 130628. Thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today. I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, St. Martin. When we're talking about citing the folks who are using these bandit signs, and you talk about the fact that some of these businesses are illegal, how are we citing those businesses back? Are we taking photos and then citing the business who's doing the advertising?
We are. We're taking down the information. Sometimes we call them, or if we can, you know, if we're able to do that, we are.
So you are doing it, because, for instance, I have a few nightclubs that I have, and they put them all over the place. So the reason I ask is because they haven't called me to complain that they're getting cited when they should be getting cited.
So maybe Commissioner Perry's a little efficient at he removes. Sometimes we have crews that go out and just remove the signs, so maybe you won't hear from the people that said, "Hey, we got cited." Sometimes we're just removing them. I know that Erie Avenue and Lehigh Avenue have been kind of been done recently, so that's what we do. We kind of just go through, and, you know, we might just remove them.
Okay. Yeah, we may want to, as we move along, I mean, they just, they continue to be a huge problem. We may want to consider how we force some of these businesses to stop this. I mean, I keep telling them, if you put 10 posters, in my case, I have like 10 of the same poster, it's like, it's the same thing, like...
Sometimes we use our swift reach. We kind of just call them, call the numbers over and over and over again, and they've gotten kind of aware of that tactic, so maybe they'll just block our number. But it's like a cat and mouse game. We try to stay one step ahead of them. So we've been removing them. Sometimes we have the swift-reach calls, and other times, if this bill helps empower other people to just take them down themselves.
Any questions from the committee? Councilwoman Bass?
Just, you know, just a thought, as, you know, you're removing the signs, and they're putting them back up, and then you're removing, and then they put them back up, and it's just, you know, going on and on and on. And it might make sense to try to figure out how do we attach the violations that they're receiving to their license and their license renewals as a business owner in the city? Because, you know, if they're costing us money because we have to keep spending, you know, our precious, limited resources, taking down their signs over and over and over again, then there should be some significant penalty, I believe, towards that. So I hope the department will look into something like that. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other questions for this witness? Seeing none, I'm going to have the clerk...
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to have the clerk read the titles of all the bills. I'm going to change the panel format around. So Rebecca, I'm going to have George and Phil Lord, because they've been here so patiently for two hearings. Welcome to our world. But I'll have the clerk read the title of Bill 140856, 140892, 140893, 140894, 140939.
140856, an ordinance amending various provisions to Subcode PM of Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, as it will take effect January 1st, 2015 pursuant to Bill Number 120647, approved January 20th, 2014, and further amending the Philadelphia Code by updating cross-references to Subcode PM that now appear in other subcodes of Title IV and in other titles of the Philadelphia Code, all under certain terms and conditions. 140892, an ordinance amending chapter 93900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Property Licenses and Owner Accountability by reorganizing the provisions of that chapter into separate provisions for rental licenses and accompanying certificates of suitability, vacant lot licenses, vacant structure licenses, and vacant waterfront structure licenses, and by revising certain requirements for those licenses, including detailing the requirement to designate a managing agent for the property, all under certain terms and conditions. 140893, an ordinance amending Subcode PM of Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, as it is amended by Bill Number 120647, approved January 20th, 2014, by further regulating security devices that limit or block access to the front face of a building or structure used for commercial purposes, under certain terms and conditions. 140894, an ordinance amending Bill Number 120647, approved January 20th, 2014, entitled an ordinance amending Title IV of the Philadelphia Code entitled the Philadelphia Building Construction and Occupancy Code by repealing Subcode PM entitled the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code and adopting and incorporating with certain additions, deletions, and amendments the 2009 International Property Maintenance Code as a Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code, further amending Title IX of the Philadelphia Code entitled Regulation of Businesses, Trades, and Professions to recode, consolidate, revise, modify, and set forth provisions regulating certain or all rental properties and tenants thereof, and certain of all vacant properties previously set forth by the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code and other provisions, and further making technical and conforming amendments throughout the Philadelphia Code, all under certain terms and conditions, by delaying the effective date of the bill. 140939, an ordinance amending chapter 9-3900 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Property Licenses and Owner Accountability, as it is amended by Bill Number 140892, by requiring the seller of a property that it must be licensed under the chapter to provide written notice to the buyer concerning the property license and other requirements of that chapter and the property maintenance requirements of the Property Maintenance Code, all under certain terms and conditions.
Thank you. I will go, we will move to George and Phil, if you can come forward. Thank you so much for your patience. I promise you that Councilman Nielsen will not interrogate you. Zyg. Where is he? He left. Wait a minute.
Good afternoon. My name is George Cool, and I thank the committee for giving me the opportunity to testify on Bills Number 140892 and Number 140939, which provides provisions in the code affecting both landlords and tenants. I am managing attorney of a housing and entity unit at Community Legal Services in Philadelphia. I have worked in the area of landlord-tenant law for almost 40 years. Our office sees numerous tenants every year who are facing problems with their homes. We also have been actively involved in legislation affecting tenants at the local, state, and national level. We commend the sponsor of these bills and this committee for the effort involved in this work and all the bills before the committee. However, we do have some comments we would like to make regarding the bills. My testimony is based on the current language in the bill, but I will also comment on some possible amendments to the bill that have been recently circulated. We fully support the provision that a property license will only be issued or renewed if there are, quote, "no outstanding violation notices associated with the property for which the application is made," and that have been in record for more than 30 days. The exception to this would be the owner, when the owner has filed an appeal of the violation and notified LNI as such. This is an extremely important provision, and we strongly urge its adoption. For too long, properties have been issued licenses where there are outstanding code violations on them. We also support the provision that a license can be suspended for failure to pay fines and costs and for any violation of section 6803, which deals with lead-based paint. We support a proposed amendment that would give a tenant the right to bring a legal action against the owner to compel compliance with the provisions in the chapter. We do, however, have concerns about the provisions regarding the certificate of rental suitability. Under the current law, if a landlord fails to comply with provisions, the landlord is denied the right to recover possession or to collect rent during or for the period of noncompliance. We support the amendment that would reinstate this remedy for the tenant. We also support an amendment that would change the language in the certificate to conform to a consent decree that we entered into in 2011 with the apartment owners and hapco. We also support Bill Number 140939 and the proposed amendment, which would have the city, when they issue a certificate regarding zoning at the time of sale, include, quote, "a summary of the license and owner accountability and responsibility requirements." The summary would include a statement that no person shall collect rent with respect to any property without first obtaining a license. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to testify on these bills.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you very much. My name is Phil Lord. I'm the executive director of TURN, and we service thousands of tenants each year, and so these bills are very important to us, and we fully support what George just said. That's the quick version. I just want to say that a lot of what we talk about in these amendments are current practice, and so we're really not changing the law. But making it clearer means there'll be fewer appeals, fewer inconsistent court decisions. People know what to do. So we're really glad that certificate of rental suitability is now clearly a requirement and clearly appro, not giving somebody a certificate means you cannot collect rent. That's very important to us. And so we really appreciate this as amended. Now, of course, the original version wasn't perfect, but the amendments bring it within line with what we're doing right now, and we thank you for the opportunity to support that. And the process has been very good. Really appreciate Councilman Heenan's office talking to everybody. Courtney Voss has been really helpful in terms of communicating. And so we think a really great process, a good result, and really glad for the opportunity to be part of it.
Thank you. And you have your written testimony that we'll officially put on the record. I also want to, for the purposes of the committee, there's a packet where Councilman Heenan and obviously the work of Courtney Voss, they provided a very good chart that really outlines all of the bills and everything that it's going to do, and we're very happy that they've worked with all of you on the amendments that have strengthened the language. So thank you very much. With that, if there's no any questions from this panel, then we will move to Rebecca. With that, if there's no any questions from this panel, then we will move to Rebecca.
Which one do you want first?
Um, just, we have them all in written. You submitted all of those in writing, right? So if you want to just quickly, I mean, they're all short.
Do you want me to read them all?
Any order you want.
All right, I'll go in numerical order. First one is 140856. Good afternoon, Councilwoman Sanchez, Councilman Heenan, and members of the Committee on Licenses and Inspections. My name is Rebecca Swanson. I'm the Director of Policy and Legislative Affairs for the Department of LNI. I am pleased to have the opportunity to present testimony on Bill Number 140856 introduced by Councilman Heenan. LNI thanks the sponsor for his commitment to working with the department on this and other related bills. The department supports this bill, which revises and amends the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code in sensible and effective ways to further the step forward taken by the adoption by city council of the 2009 International Property Maintenance Code. Some of the improvements include reorganization of administrative code provisions, restructuring of the provisions for unfit, unsafe, and imminently dangerous buildings, and syncing the code with the building code, planning code, and other related codes. In addition to these revisions, the adaptations made by council to the prior property maintenance code are substantially retained here. Should this bill pass and become law, the department will immediately begin the internal processes needed to ensure that our code enforcement falls within this new code. Thank you for the opportunity to provide the department's testimony on Bill Number 140856. I am happy to answer any questions at this time.
Read all of them, and if we have any questions, we'll take them up here.
This is 892. Good afternoon, Councilwoman Sanchez, Councilman Heenan, and members of the Committee on Licenses and Inspections. My name is Rebecca Swanson. I'm the Director of Policy and Legislative Affairs for LNI. I am pleased to have the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill Number 140892 introduced by Councilman Heenan. LNI thanks the sponsor for his commitment to working with the department on this and other related bills. The department supports this bill as amended, which revises and amends certain property licensing and related requirements and moves them from the Property Maintenance Code to Title IX of the Philadelphia Code. The department believes that this is a sensible change that will make licensing requirements more accessible to the public. The shift streamlines property licensing requirements while preserving the substance of the existing requirements for rental licenses, certificates of rental suitability, vacant property license, and managing agent responsibilities. The department is prepared to continue to enforce these requirements should this bill pass and become law. Thank you for the opportunity to provide the department's testimony on Bill Number This is 893. Good afternoon, Councilwoman Sanchez, Councilman Heenan, and members of the Committee on Licenses and Inspections. My name is Rebecca Swanson. I'm the Director of Policy and Legislative Affairs for LNI. I am pleased to have the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill Number 140893 introduced by Councilman Heenan. LNI thanks the sponsor for his commitment to working with the department on this and other related bills. The department supports this bill as amended as it relates to provisions regulating the appearance of existing security devices in the Property Maintenance Code. Specifically, the bill requires that all existing solid security gates or doors located on buildings throughout the city be maintained to specific standards, including being kept free of graffiti and advertisement. The department is prepared to enforce these requirements should this bill pass and become law. The department also supports the future introduction of a companion bill that would create specific requirements in the building code regarding the construction and composition of new security gates, shutters, and devices. Thank you for the opportunity to provide the department's testimony on Bill Number This is 894. Good afternoon, Councilwoman Sanchez, Councilman Heenan, and members of the Committee on Licenses and Inspections. My name is Rebecca Swanson. I'm the Director of Policy and Legislative Affairs for LNI. I am pleased to have the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill Number 140894 introduced by Councilman Heenan. LNI thanks the sponsor for his commitment to working with the department on this and other related bills. The department supports this bill and anticipates being able to implement the revised Property Maintenance Code by July 1st, 2015. Thank you for the opportunity to provide the department's testimony on Bill Number Last one. This is 939. Good afternoon, Councilwoman Sanchez, Councilman Heenan, and members of the Committee on Licenses and Inspections. My name is Rebecca Swanson. I'm the Director of Policy and Legislative Affairs for LNI. I am pleased to have the opportunity to provide testimony on Bill Number 140939 introduced by Councilman Heenan. LNI thanks the sponsor for his commitment to working with the department on this and other related bills. The department supports the substantive provisions of this bill as proposed to be amended. In particular, the amended bill would require that the state-required property certification issued by the department to an owner of a property about to be sold contain a notice about compliance with Section 9 of the Philadelphia Code. Specifically, the property certification, which now indicates the zoning classification and legality of the existing use of the property, would now be required to also contain a notification regarding the buyer's obligation to obtain any appropriate property licenses and directions as to where the buyer can obtain a copy of the Philadelphia Property Maintenance Code. Should this bill pass and become law, the department is prepared to revise the current property certification issued by the department to incorporate language to this effect. Thank you for the opportunity to provide the department's testimony on Bill Number 140939. Now I'm done.
Thank you. The chair wants to recognize quickly Councilman Heenan and the sponsor of these bills.
Hi, thank you. Thank you for all your testimony. You did quite well in a short period of time. This is for, thank you for all your hard work and due diligence with working with my staff. I want to thank my staff for putting together a lot of these amendments and the stakeholders that participated in this legislation. So I just want to state for the record again that the amendments have been circulated, they are provided here along with the charts, with everybody's review in a timely fashion, you know, and thank everybody for their participation.
Thank you. And I thank the bill sponsor for working with everyone and providing the information. This is a big undertaking. I know it looks light now, but it's a huge undertaking, and I'm glad that Courtney spent all this time charting it out for us, so we didn't have to read all the bills. So thank you. So thank you, Rebecca. If no one else is here to testify, we're going to move from the hearing to the public meeting of the Committee on Licenses and Inspection. The chair will recognize Councilman Greenley for a motion on Bill 140893.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the adoption of the amendment to Bill Number 140893.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none. Bill Number 120103 and the build, oh, just amended, 140893 are going to be held in committee. I recognize Councilman Greenley for a motion on several amendments, and I'll let you do the numbers of the bill.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move the adoption of the amendments to the following bills. Bill Number 130628, 140750, 140856, 140892, 140893, and 140142.
Oh, yeah.
And 140894, and 140939.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none. The bills are amended. Can I have a motion to move the bills as amended out of committee?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I move that the following bills be reported out of this committee as amended with a favorable recommendation, and the rules of council be suspended to allow first reading in our next session of council. Bill Number is 130628, 140750, 140856, 140892, 140...
No, that's not...
Oh, no, I'm sorry. 140142, 140894, and 140939.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Seeing none. All of the bills stated will be moved out of this committee with a favorable recommendation, and further move that the rules of council will be suspended so to allow first reading at our next public session. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
This concludes the hearing.
Why she got her finger there? That's why she got her finger. She don't want me to read.